Stacy, can you read the role?
Councilmember Pulapati.
Here.
Councilmember Sander.
Yeah.
Councilmember Budge.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Here.
Mayor Gatewood.
Here. Uh, can you go ahead and read the meeting, video recording, and playback schedule?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, March fourth, at nine a.m., and Sunday, March seventh, at six p.m. This meeting can also be viewed on Metro Cable's fourteen's YouTube channel. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within forty-eight hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Excellent. Um, David, can you do our pledge of allegiance?
I can. Everyone would join me in please standing. I see Linda has a flag. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can I go ahead and have Pastor Dan from River City Christian go ahead and do the invocation?
Can you hear me?
We hear you Pastor.
Our Lord and Savior was born in a small town. He grew up under the authority of local leaders and officials who managed the majority of his daily life. We lift up our leaders to you today, Lord. We pray for our mayor, our city council, our county commissioners, our police chiefs, and all who serve our local communities. The Lord tells us in First Timothy, "I urge then first of all that petitions, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness." Please strengthen them tonight with wisdom and grace for the heavy burden they carry. May they manage their teams and projects with love and grace. Keep their hearts pure and their eyes turned toward your face as they work in the best interest of the people they are called to serve. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor.
Thank you Pastor Dan.
All right. Uh, no presentations, so we'll move on to public comments. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference by using Zoom. If you want to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of the screen. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by our city clerk. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provision of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of the emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after posting of the agenda. Do we have any public comments Stacy?
Yes, we do. And I'm going to, we have one speaker unidentified calling in by phone. I'm going to go ahead and allow that person to talk. Telephone number nine one six, and it's two zero five. And you'll have three minutes to share your public comment. For the speaker who has their hand raised, area code nine one six two zero five. If you can go ahead and press star nine to unmute yourself. Star six, I'm sorry.
Hello?
Hello?
Can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, hi. Um, this is Helen Willen-Bashaw from the Chiragrande area. Uh, I'm a little disappointed in Rancho Cordova's what I consider a lack of participation in the Black History Month. Um, the, what was broadcast last night, I don't, I consider it a half-hearted effort. When we've been, you've been made aware of September, the importance of William Leedore's contributions starting in eighteen forty-four that had followed through now. I wish that you would, um, in the future, consider participating in black heritage somehow other than just with that, um, the music that I, I think it was a half-hearted effort. Um, um, another issue that I have, uh, we still haven't heard anything back on the poop sacks or the, um, I can't remember what they're called. But, uh, because I was down in Sacramento today in Old Town and I see that the catch bags, and I see that they're wearing them on all the horses down there. I do think it's something serious that needs to be done. Um, because it's not fair for the community to have to clean up after a horse owner when there's ordinances that cover, uh, dog poop that the owner has to clear up. Um, that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else Stacy?
No, we do not.
All right, and I'll just repeat that being the African-American on council, I am perfectly happy with how my city has represented us. And I think we're doing everything we possibly can in an amazing way for Black History Month. Please look out, we did a, there's an article coming out about our community in Sacramento Bee, and I think we are represented well, and I was glad to have them here. So, going on to, uh, council reports, I'm going to start with Siri Pulapati. Siri?
Um, yeah, it was a really interesting week last night, uh, I'm sorry, last week. Uh, I attended the Business Economic and, um, Forecast hosted by the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce. And I must say, it was a pretty well researched, um, event. I think they, um, made it happen flawlessly. Mayor, you made a fine speech. It was not fifteen hours long. It was actually pretty short, uh, in my opinion. I think we got all the information that we needed, um, and, um, Diane, if you're listening, if you could send me the material, that'd be awesome. Um, you know, all the new businesses that are coming to the area, I think, you know, Rancho Cordova is here to stay and it's actually going pretty well.
Thank you Siri. Uh, let's go ahead and do David.
Sure. Uh, I've got a vaccine talk coming up this week on Wednesday. You may have seen some of the promos for it. This follows on my, uh, virology talk, or talk about the virology of COVID nineteen that I did last October. I promised then that I would follow up when we had vaccines available. And so it looks like a good time right now to talk about that as they're becoming more and more available. Uh, done some radio, some TV, um, and then of course, we're going to have the Zoom meeting, uh, Wednesday night, so just in a couple days. Encourage you, if you're interested, go to the chamber's website or the Cordova Community Council's website. You can find a link to register for that talk, and you can even submit questions in advance. So I'm, uh, I'm happy to try to, to take those. Uh, in other news, uh, still dealing however with pandemic. Uh, RCAA, the Rancho Athletic Association, which I'm president, is trying desperately to get our youth sports back off the ground. We have of course had a lot of challenges trying to do this in a, in a safe way and one that follows local regulations. I can tell you, there's enormous frustration among youth sports providers, not just in Rancho Cordova, but all over our region and the state and the country about what is, what's basically been, been perpetrated. The, the net result is that those local leagues, the Little League, girls softball, Rancho Cordova soccer, all of those local leagues that allow everyone to play, every kid gets a chance to play in, in communities all over the place have basically been stymied either because of school regulations or park district regulations, county regulations, et cetera, from having their kids, uh, participate in sports. But what has flourished are sort of this fly-by-night, suddenly organized for-profit coaches getting teams together to play sports, uh, in total violation of the pandemic rules. Um, and unfortunately, those sort of new step-up teams are, uh, taking all of these, all of the kids away from the community leagues. And of course, the community leagues have enormously more value for us in Rancho Cordova. In part because we've got a lot of kids that don't have options, they can't afford to play in those for-profit leagues. Uh, but they, but they can play, uh, in the community leagues. So to the extent that we're losing kids out of the, uh, community leagues, that's a real shame. And so RCAA is working overtime trying to find ways to get these leagues back in action. One option, uh, is to move those league operations that are currently on school district property completely off of school parcels and into park district facilities. To accomplish that, we have to do things like cancel reservations at the Mather Sports Complex so that Rancho of a Little League and Rancho of a Girls Soccer can play there instead of the teams that are typically out-of-town teams that currently play at the Mather Sports Complex. That would allow us to play in park district, in the park district, whereas school sites uh, have been incredibly difficult to get access to for a variety of, I'd say largely political reasons, dealing with teachers' unions or the governor or what have you, but the school sites have not been available. But following our two-by-two meeting last week with the school district, we do think it's possible now to get those two leagues in particular, Rancho of a Little League and Girls Softball, back up and running uh, on their original and historic locations. And in the case of Girls Softball at their newly upgraded facility at Mills Middle School. So we're very hopeful that can happen here in a couple weeks. And we'll get back to good, healthy, community-based sports where every kid has a chance to play. And that is the mission of RCAA and all of our leagues. So stay tuned on that front. I think there's good news coming, and we have a fallback plan if we have to use it. Uh, Regional Sand is your new board member on Regional Sand. I was immediately appointed, it's probably a low guy on the totem pole thing, to the committee trying to recruit a new district engineer. That's what they call their executive director, a district engineer. Although it turns out, a lot of district engineers are actually lawyers. All kinds of jokes could erupt from that particular statement of a lawyer masquerading as a district engineer in a sewer agency.
Sorry Adam.
I'm not going to go there Adam, I'm just going to let that go right at that point. Nonetheless, I'm, I did move that we not accept any, you know, lawyer applications. I, I think the lawyer in the room said, "Not a good idea," so I don't know. We'll have to see how that sorts itself out. But in any case, uh, I'm on, I'm on board there at Regional Sand. Uh, the Business Outlook event last week was awesome. Uh, you know, in, in as far as you're presenting these things remotely and we can't go around and see all of our friends on the room, it was awesome. The speakers you had, Diane, uh, from, from, uh, US Chamber of Commerce, he did a great job, and your own report about business outlook here in Rancho Cordova, good. And unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, I had a little delay at the beginning. I missed your remarks. So I really hope it's taped somewhere. I'd like to be able to see what you said. Uh, let's see, what else? I mentioned a little bit about the Folsom Cordova two-by-two, Donald might want to cover more of that. They're moving very rapidly towards opening, and I, I wish them every success in doing that. All of the, as a virologist, I can say all the science points in the direction of it being safe to send your kids back to school. Whether teachers are vaccinated or not, it appears not to be a risk to the teacher, not to be a risk to the students. Forty-two, uh, states around this nation have schools largely open and sports functioning. And there have not been significant outbreaks linked to those activities. Almost always outbreaks, uh, that are mentioned with regard to kids have to do with their social activities outside of school. It's, it's just not a virus that is being transmitted in school environments. So you can take a lot of, a lot of hope that we're close to recovery in that context. Let's see, we had a, uh, board meeting last week for Cal Cities, our division here in the Sacramento Valley. And didn't have anything in particular come up there. There was some legislation that bears watching that you'll probably get a report of from, uh, from other locations as well as from the league itself, so I'm going to skip that. And finally, my Acadaca team is competing this Saturday. Uh, so this is a local school I coached, their Academic Decathlon team. We were, we shorthand call that Acadaca. These are middle school kids, and we have a tradition of doing extremely well in this competition. But this year, of course, we can't all get together in some gymnasium and have a big competition. So some schools are having to compete with every kid at home in front of their own, you know, computer or iPad, uh, and trying to jointly work on logic problems and answer individual tests. That they can probably do remotely. Or do this super quiz game show-like thing remotely. It's enormously challenging to pull this off. But kudos to the, to the academic folks who run it, that they found a way to, to make it work. We did a trial run actually last Saturday with some hiccups, but it'll be all right. So, uh, hopefully be back with good news for you in a couple weeks, that Rancho Cordova has again brought home some academic awards. That's my report.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond, uh, Dr. Sander, I would simply just note that
I know you may not.
... a lawyer. And I think you deal with a lot more blank in that job.
That's hilarious. All right.
I thought you were going to say March was Lawyer Appreciation Month or something like that.
Hilarious.
No, no, uh, February twenty, or I'm sorry, February thirtieth and thirty-first is Lawyer Appreciation Day.
Ah, and it, and it stretches from eleven fifty-nine p.m. to twelve oh one a.m., right, during that time period?
Nope.
All right, Linda.
Oh, joining the party here. Um, so, um, last week we had a regional transit meeting. And frankly, the majority of it was all closed session, so I'm not going to report on that. But I can give you some information that Regional Transit, um, and we're helping to publicize all of this. Regional Transit is providing free rides on both bus and light rail to, from vaccination appointments.
Cool.
Yeah. The, um, all you need is your little, um, uh, you need a, um, either on your phone a confirmation of appointment or like your little white card if you're going to your second appointment. Um, the University of Texas in Austin did a study of our, uh, RT's Ride Free K through twelve and found that it was highly successful, that it really did reduce cars, um, going to school district destinations. And it increased, uh, uh, student ridership to non-school destinations. And it gave students more ability to move around after school. So, um, that is definitely continuing once we ever get back to school again, but, um, we're definitely going to continue that one. Um, HCD has, uh, put into the budget two million dollars for transit supportive housing. Um, I've got a note about the governor's executive order, uh, on a climate action plan. And the note I have says that David, you may have to deal with a step at Secog being more, uh, focused on transit and less focused on roads. Um, something to that effect. The, um, Friday, uh, Friday, oh, uh, ten days ago was the last day for bill submission at the state. And some of the bills that, um, I'm hoping Maria will watch, and I meant to write this down and send it to all of you. Um, ACA one is a voter approval for funding for increased trans, transit. Um, AB twelve twenty-six supports the Capitol Carter, uh, rail system. Uh, a bill by Senator Weiner, um, proposes a road user surcharge to replace the fuel tax which is being lost because of those of us who drive electric vehicles. And, um, there is a bill, AB seven eighty-six going through to support the executive director of the California Transportation Commission being a gubernatorial appointment. And somehow David, um, it probably strikes me that that's making that, uh, position more political than it was ever intended to be. Um, we had a wonderful work session, uh, phase two of a work session last week. Um, I ended up reading to students at Navigator and had a great time. Garrett, I know you, you taped a, a reading session also, so I went over and the principal filmed me. And I read, um, "There's No Such Thing As A Dragon," which is a wonderful book where, uh, the whole idea is, um, don't let little problems, don't ignore little problems because they might become very big problems. And then a book by the veterinarian, the English veterinarian James Harriet, who is on PBS right now, is called Only One Woof, and it's about the importance of family and this dear doggy who saved his only one woof in his entire life for his brother. Um, there is actually, there is a Metro Fire, uh, Foundation, a public safety foundation, which I serve on, where I serve on the board. And we are facilitating the donation of a very nice grant that will, I mean, ultimately it's, it's a bequest, but it will ultimately will become, um, scholarships for the children of, um, firefighters who have passed away. And then on Wednesday this week, we have LAFCO, and that's what I've been doing. Thank you Garrett.
Wow, that's a lot. Goodness. Right.
Oh, wait, 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 Garrett, Garrett, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, last meeting, I reported that we had lost one of the two gentlemen who had, um, um, remodeled the Nimbus Winery, uh, in its original version.
Mm-hmm.
As, as it turns out, these two gentlemen were, um, fellow employees at Aerojet Solids. Um, they passed, Marlin Guinea was the other partner. They passed away within three days of each other, and they both passed away from the same cause. Which is very sorry, very sad. So I would ask that tonight, we adjourn in the memory of Marlin Guinea. And I will send the correct spelling to Persephone and Stacy.
All right, Donald, you done with the birthday celebrations?
Yes, we have a ten-year-old as of today in the household. And a six-year-old that lost it, and a six-year-old that lost it this morning. Uh, so it was a very big day in the Terry household here. Um, first, I just wanted to make the council aware that, uh, we had, uh, I believe our first, uh, Children's Museum Board meeting for the year. Uh, and Alan Godlove, who is, who was chair for years and years and years, is now the chair again. Uh, and I was elected chair-elect, which I guess means next year I will be the chair of the Board of the Children's Museum. Um, so I want to give you that update. The Air District, I think like, like Linda kind of indicated, we probably spent a little more time in closed session than we did in, with the rest of it. Um, but remember it is still check before you burn time. Um, even though, you know, it's raining and it's cold and we think that, you know, this is, this is the time that you can have your fireplaces. This is actually, um, aside from wildfires, this is the worst air time that we have during the year is for, for particular matters. Uh, so make sure to do that. And then, um, David, yeah, I think you pretty much covered it. I think Folsom Cordova, our conversations really with them have been, you know, all of their steps in getting more and more of their student body on campus. But as far as I know, I believe they're the only one in the county right now that's there. Or, and it's been doing that for any amount of time. I know El Crow announced they're a couple of weeks away from, I think their, their youngest students coming on the campus, uh, with a rollout planned to eighth grade, I believe, next. So, uh, more to come, uh, you know, as the year has progressed, we'll be having more of these two-by-twos. Um, and hopefully we'll have some more updates for you. But yeah, I mean, as, as far as a partner trying to, trying to do the right thing for kids, I think Folsom Cordova has come a long way in this region compared with a lot of other educational groups. Um, you know, and, you know, if everything lines up, hopefully we'll see more and more of our school districts being able to, um, transition kids back, back to in-person learning because we know how important that is. Uh, that's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
Right. Excellent. All right, uh, I'm going to double down. Uh, thank you so much for the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, Rancho Chamber of Commerce, for the economic forecast. I was very, very shiny, David. So the lights, like you should wear makeup if you're going to go under lights. Just that's why I was listening. But it was great, and it was great to see all the growth even during these bad times that are happening for our city. Uh, we had the Library Commission. I've never been in a meeting that took sixteen minutes, but I think it quotes as the shortest meeting. They had one or two things on the agenda and it was done. So it was great, uh, being, uh, vice chair of that. Um, I got to read, uh, One Fish, Two Fish, Red Fish, Blue Fish. So I was killing it, and, uh, everyone thought I was hilarious because I crack myself up when I read Dr. Seuss. I don't know, it's just the silliest books. So I really enjoyed that, reading all our kids. Um, the next was, I want to say thank you to Marcus D. Smith from the Sacramento Bee coming out and interviewing me. Um, it was amazing, uh, uh, learning, uh, just preparing for something like that. Uh, interesting facts on, uh, the last Black History Month, but Rancho Cordova has the, is proportional to the amount of African-Americans to our cops. We actually have four percent of our police force is actually African-American. And interesting enough, I also found out that a third of our cop force is also minorities. So it's, we really are an extremely diverse, um, um, group or community. I mean, seventy different minority groups with ninety different languages spoken in our city, and a third of our cops are minorities. And I don't think any other city can match those numbers. I would be shocked if they could come up and stand up with us. So you really are well-suited or well-balanced in the city. Um, thank you for Chris Clark for everything you're doing to try to get our, our baseball fields. Uh, I sw, I really appreciate having someone that's really super pro Rancho on the Folsom Cordova, uh, uh, school board. And then I met about the connector, and hopefully we can finish that up sometime before I die. And at that, that was terrible. I apologize. Um, City Manager Report, Cyrus Abhar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief. Uh, everything has all, all already been mentioned. Uh, just a couple things I wanted to, uh, point out that I, our Secog's Regional City Manager Meeting was, uh, held last week, and I participated. And, uh, we had a variety of discussions and topics, uh, related to some of the assembly bills that are in progress, uh, on local control. Uh, so we will be working with our colleagues to, uh, make sure that we provide the right input. So, uh, to, to the extent possible, local control is maintained, uh, with some of our assembly bills. Uh, there was also some discussion related to, uh, the reopening and, uh, how, potentially how it will affect, you know, the businesses in the long run and how the new normal is going to look like. And one of the things that we, uh, felt that would be appropriate for Secog to assist the, the region is to understand, help us understand through some studies, the new normal and what, uh, most businesses will operate under the pan, after the pandemic. Uh, there was also some discussion related to, uh, Green Means Go. Uh, Secog is, um, lobbying very heavily for some, some funding to be included in state budget. And, uh, based on the work that has been done so far, I think we would be very good candidates to receive some of that funding, uh, along our commercial corridors. Uh, that's pretty much all I have. And the only thing I, else I wanted to mention is that a reminder to our community members that, and our nonprofit organizations, our, uh, Community Enhancement Fund Grant Program is now open. The application period closes on March nineteenth, so, uh, please make sure that you, uh, submit your bequest or application before that date. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you so much Cyrus. All right, so we're going to move on to Consent Calendar Items.
Oh Garrett, I, one other little thing. We talked here before about the Purple Air Sensors.
Oh yeah.
I just wanted to announce that Purple Air Sensor Tiffany Farms went live today.
Interesting.
It's on my, yeah, it's on my front porch. It's scoring in the, you know, twenties or thirties or something like that. Um, but it's, it's cool to see that network actually. Over the past couple weeks, it's been like sprout in Rancho Cordova. So now we have a few air quality sensors up around Rancho Cordova. Instead of before, I think our situation was we had like one and one over in Rosemont or something like that. So the data available, both, you know, public share, weather underground, purple air through the air district, all now, uh, with more sensors in Rancho Cordova. Thanks to our great residents who are volunteering to put them up.
Interesting.
Amazing. All right. Back to Consent Calendar Items. Consent Calendar Items consists of matters deemed routine and non-contributial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for an individual consideration, all items may be approved by one motion.
So Garrett, um, I don't want to pull um either um thirteen point two or thirteen point four.
Okay.
Um, and I'm happy to move the consent calendar of thirteen point one to thirteen point four. I just need to comment that um I still do not approve of gates. And in this particular ca- both of these cases, it is, from my perspective, it is absolutely the means to an end. And the the goal here is to get um, to finally get some age-restricted communities specifically for um seniors so that they can stay here in Rancher Cordova where they've been living for decades. And that's really the only reason that I'm willing to vote for either one of those items.
Before you push that ahead, um Linda, can I get Stacy to um, are there's a correction needs to be made? Stacy, can you go ahead?
So for item thirteen point four, there was a a typo. There's a a letter missing from a name. So we just want to bring that to everyone's attention in in case that makes a difference for everyone. So in thirteen point four, um, I'm just gonna read it. The second ordinance reading for the ranch special planning area amendment and the first amendment to the development agreement between the city of Rancher Cordova and it should be K-Hovenian. There's a V that's missing from the name at Jaeger Ranch relative to the ranch. So we just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Um, yeah, I'm for sure.
I would, I appreciate that. I wanted to echo.
Not a B, a V.
V of none.
Yes, H O V.
That's what she said.
Okay.
So I would.
Go ahead, Donald.
I'm totally agreeing with Linda's comments about the the gates. I'm not a big fan of it, but at this point, we've, I think, exhausted that conversation. And so I'm willing to second the motion to move the uh calendar.
Stacy, can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Terry?
Yeah, her audio's not working.
She did a thumbs up. Does that count in court?
It's recorded.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Sander?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood?
Hi.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and move on down to calendar items. And I'm gonna go ahead and have uh Stacy announce the subject.
So we're to uh regular calendar item sixteen point one, Proposed Municipal Code Amendments Regarding Potentially Dangerous and Vicious Animals and Animal Service Fee Adjustments.
Staff report, please.
So we're gonna go ahead and move over a couple of our staff who are ready to present on this item. And we'll pull up the PowerPoint presentation as well. Craig and Russ, are you there?
Um, yes, this is uh Craig. I'm ready when you are. We ready?
We're ready.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Craig Hall. I'm the Senior Animal Services Officer for the City of Rancher Cordova. Um, today I want to talk to you um to the council about the proposed amendments ordinance, the proposed animal ordinance amendments and updates and fee modifications in regards to animal licensing and potentially dangerous animal and vicious animal um permits. Having a little bit of difficulty with my slide. Okay. Some of the goals I uh I have, um, or some of the goal staff has is to give um insight into the ordinance and the changes we are we are recommending and get feedback from council in regards to the direction um you'd like us to take. Uh, additionally, I want to discuss the licensing fees that we currently have established and the potentially dangerous animal and vicious animal permit fees that are um being enforced in the city. Um, first, I'd like to talk just a little bit about the changes to the definition of the vicious animal ordinance. Um, currently, we have a potentially dangerous animal and vicious animal ordinance that says an animal can be designated potentially dangerous or vicious after it attacks uh animals multiple times or attacks a person once. Part of that definition labels an animal vicious if it's impounded uh as a result of its owner being a uh involved in dogfighting. So the way the language in the uh municipal code goes now, it says that any animal um taken up when its owner is convicted of dogfighting is uh automatically declared a vicious animal. The trend in animal services is to kind of move away from this approach and to evaluate each animal on its own merit. That's important because some of these animals may be only a couple of weeks old um as as puppies or they could be older dogs or bait dogs used in the training of the fighting dog. So not all animals seized and taken up in these cases are inherently vicious or potentially dangerous. So we'd like to see uh the recommendation from staff is that we evaluate each animal on its own merit and then place them accordingly, um, if that's possible. Additionally, with the vicious animal definitions, we also want to talk um about potentially dangerous animal definitions and some of the need for change in our municipal code as it currently stands. Currently, the municipal code says that an animal that attacks a person twice within a three-year period and that person has to do a defensive action to protect themselves meets the criteria to be deemed a potentially dangerous animal. It also says that an animal can kill another animal twice within a thirty-six-month period and then that animal would be designated potentially dangerous. We feel, staff feels that these requirements are too arbit- arbitrary and lenient. Um, we feel that an animal, whether it attacks a person or another animal twice within a uh three-year period, should meet the criteria to be designated potentially dangerous. And furthermore, when an animal kills another domestic animal, that should be enough, uh, meet the requirement right there so that we can prevent a second animal from being killed or injured by that same animal. The idea is that we designate the animal potentially dangerous and we put in permit conditions to help uh or to try and prevent a secondary attack from that animal designated as potentially dangerous. So in summary, that was kind of a lot, but we'd like to see both animals and people protected under the ordinance and that when an animal attacks another animal and that results in death, we'd like to see that meet the criteria to be uh designated a potentially dangerous animal. In the ordinance, as it stands, there is no minimum set permit conditions for vicious animals. And so when an animal is declared vicious through a hearing, we can uh set conditions on those animals and permit conditions to try and um stop a secondary attack from happening. But unless that uh hearing officer sets uh conditions that we agree with, there's no minimum set standard. So staff proposes that we introduce a minimum set standard of permit conditions that apply to both potentially dangerous and vicious animals. Right now, the the standards for potentially dangerous animal are very lenient. Um, it only asks that the dog owner register the dog um and maintain its vaccinations. That the dog, if it moves or is passes away or sold, they notify us within twenty-four hours and that the animal is kept in a a safe enclosure. We'd like to expand upon these um conditions to include safety measures such as walking the dog with a muzzle. Um, an adult has to be in care or custody of the animal when it's off its property. A leash no longer than six foot is to be used when out in public. So those are just some examples of provision, I'm sorry, of of um conditions that we'd like to make just a minimum standard of care. Um, again, it's all about public safety and the way it's worded right now, they're very, very lenient in the conditions that are opposed upon these animals that have proven themselves to be um potentially dangerous or even vicious. Along with that, we'd like to see a permit application for the potentially dangerous animal or vicious animal um to be granted a permit. Right, right now, there is no permit process for these animals. So when an owner's dog meets the criteria to be deemed potentially dangerous or vicious, they simply have to come in and pay for that permit fee, which is currently a hundred dollars, and they are granted um the permit. There's no review of an application and ability to deny it for public safety reasons. And and furthermore, on that application, we'd ask that information um be included such as like a secondary contact if we can't get a hold of the owner. We'd ask to um be allowed to inspect the property to make sure fencing is in good order so that the dog can't easily escape. So we want to see a per- um, an application process that can be reviewed by the manager of neighborhood services. Um, and then we can evaluate that and make a decision on how to proceed with that animal. The last thing I want to talk about was in in regards to potentially dangerous animal or vicious animals um is the lack of um any rules or regulations for animals coming in from other cities or jurisdictions. Currently, an animal that's designated out of our city can come into Rancher Cordova and will not have any um conditions or permit conditions placed upon it. So that means we have no way to track these animals when they're entering the city and we have no way to enforce any kind of our municipal code on these animals. What staff recommends is that an animal entering the city from another jurisdiction uh automatically be designated uh the same designation that the previous jurisdiction or city designated that animal and that the animal has to abide by those conditions set forth in that previous designation. Um, this would allow us to track these animals and and um keep their conditions from the previous city uh in place. And it would alleviate animals coming into Rancher Cordova as as like a secondary getaway spot where they don't have to be held accountable, uh, the owner doesn't have to be held accountable in the same manner that they would in another city or location. So we feel these changes are all um guided towards public safety. And they're not, they're mostly regulatory in nature and we hope that by by making some of these changes, we can increase public safety with regards to pets and people. So that's um the changes in the definition and the ordinance that we would like to see move forward. Um, and welcome any insight that council may have. Uh, next, I want to talk about the fees as they relate to licensing and uh the potentially dangerous animal permit. Um, currently, we see that only two percent of cats and eight percent of dogs are licensed in the city. Um, it is a state law that animals be licensed after the age of four months. Um, and it's a, it's in our municipal code, the the same verbiage that says an animal should be licensed, it shall be licensed after four months um within thirty days. Um, currently, what we're seeing here is that the pricing of unaltered animals here is uh it really, it's significantly higher than other local jurisdictions that surround our city. So when we look at the the chart here, you'll see that an unaltered animal for Rancher Cordova, that license for that animal is a hundred and fifty dollars. And a late penalty for that animal is a hundred dollars. So if uh i- if an owner wants to do the right thing and and come into compliance in regards to licensing, they're looking at purchasing a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar um license to come into compliance. And I think the next highest city, it's about sixty-five dollars to come into compliance for a one-year license. As a result of this fee structure, we're seeing that most unaltered animals are going unlicensed because the licenses we are processing here are uh heavily, heavily uh, they consist of altered animals because that's a fee that people can afford and I believe that most people want to to uh follow the rules and and do the right thing. So they're coming to compliance with altered animals, but when we're running into unaltered animals, the the majority are not licensed because of the costliness of this. And um additionally, the late penalty um even stops people with altered animals from coming to into compliance because they don't want to pay a hundred and fifteen dollars for a fifteen-dollar license. So what staff recommends is that we lower the unaltered fee and the late penalty um in order to try to increase compliance. We we've set up a structure here to incentivize longer purchases of licenses. So if you look at this chart, you can see that an altered animal license fee would not change with our prop- our proposition. It actually uh currently is fifteen for one year, thirty for two year and forty-five for three. We'd like to make it more affordable the longer the licenses purchased for. And uh a a dog owner can only purchase a license or a dog or cat owner can only purchase a license that is as good as the vaccine for what you're purchasing it for, right?
Right.
By giving a the cost break for longer purchases, we hope to get people into compliance and then we're gonna offer them a a renewal fee. And eventually, once the people come into compliance, we hope to line up the expiration date of their vaccine with the expiration date of a license. So here, staff recommends lowering the unaltered uh license fee for thirty dollars for one year, um fifty-five for two and eighty for three. This is more in line with uh local jurisdictions that surround the city and it doesn't have a punitive feeling to it. The approach of making a a an unaltered license fee so high that that people are gonna come into compli- uh, people are gonna spay or neuter their animal, we haven't seen that uh be the effect of of the high price of that license. We've actually seen people unable to afford it and have a very difficult time with, once they fall out of compliance, to get back into compliance without affecting them financially. We recommend lowering the late penalty from a hundred to twenty. This still uh gives people en- encouragement to to make sure they renew in time. And what we see is a large part of our licensing comes from renewals. So the idea here is to allow people to come into compliance um and dollar penalty um if they should become late for whatever reason. Um, and I think that's important right now, especially when people are struggling to pay basic bills. Um, it's very, they have to make choices and animal licensing is just not um rising to the importance of some other fees they may be facing. So we feel by lowering these fees, we will be able to increase compliance, which in effect will um give us a healthier pet population and essentially a safer city. The next fee I'd like to discuss is the potentially dangerous animal and vicious animal permit fee. Currently, that fee is a hundred dollars for that animal. When you look at neighboring cities, you see that Elk Grove charges four-hundred-and-fifty dollars for three years and that's to be paid upfront. Citrus Heights charges three-hundred dollars for two years and that's to be paid upfront. And a vicious animal in Folsom is two-hundred the first year and a hundred dollars each year after. The thought process behind charging more money upfront is that we want the owner to commit to this process and maintain their animal in a way um that keeps their neighbors and other people in the city safe. And currently, with a hundred dollar um permit fee for a vicious animal who may have mauled somebody, we're seeing that it costs less to actually have a that type of animal, an aggressive vicious animal, than it does an unaltered animal. And we feel like those fees are misaligned. So staff proposes two options and both of them um directly take on this charging more money upfront to try to buy commitment in from the owner. And additionally, with a higher fee, um, we hope to offset some of the burden that's uh incurred right now for an officer who has to work these cases and manage these animals. It can take an officer hours to go through this investigation and to hold a hearing and then to ultimately end up with a potentially dangerous or vicious animal designation. And right now, the hundred dollars, um, it does, it's not effective for cost recovery. And we don't think we'll ever be in a situation where cost recovery is actually realized, but we do want to try to offset some of that uh burden that these cases and animals um are causing on the finances for animal services. So we're suggesting option one be a three-hundred-dollar first-year payment for a potentially dangerous animal and a hundred dollars each year for two years after that initial year. So it's a total of a three-year designation costing a a five-hundred dollars. We su- we suggest that a vicious animal be five-hundred dollars the first year. We su- we suggest that a vicious animal be five hundred dollars the first year and a hundred dollars each year after that for the life of the dog. Vicious animal designations stay on that animal for the life of the dog and it's important this allows us to go out and per uh perform property inspections when necessary. It allows us to maintain good records, um it allows us to spend time managing these animals um that we're finding it currently difficult to uh properly um track these animals with what the system that's in place right now. Option two is very similar. It it again said it asks for four hundred and fifty dollars upfront for three years uh for a potentially dangerous and for a vicious animal, it asks for um four hundred and fifty upfront for three years and then the hundred dollars each year after that for the life of the animal. We feel like these changes are again aligning with uh neighboring jurisdictions and will help improve public safety here by really asking the owner to commit to owning these animals um upfront. Staff is asking council for um direction on these regulatory changes to the potentially dangerous animal and vicious animal ordinances, including the definition changes that I've discussed, um the permit conditions that we think are important, um the registering requirement from animals that are declared potentially dangerous or vicious that are coming into the city um and the permit application process. Additionally, we'd like council to um review our suggestion to de- decrease the unaltered animal license and late renewal fees um and to incentivize compliance and um consider raising the potentially dangerous animal and vicious animal permit fees. We hope to return with a complete and comprehensive ordinance amendment and fee resolution at a future council meeting and welcome any feedback.
All right, thank you. Stacy, do we have any public comment?
We do, just a moment. We have a caller, nine one six two zero five, if you would like to spend three minutes. Helen, are you there?
I'm here. Regarding the licensing, I think it's a good idea, however, the licensing should be in in line with what the veterinarian group has set determined that the larger dogs should not be neutered or spayed sooner as what's been done in the past because they're in their growth spurt and not having the um being neutered, it reduces their body's ability to um develop the bones at the rate that they really need to be. So there should be something that lists that an owner would um that has these large dogs, like your bull mastiffs and your shepherds and things like that, that there should be some kind of thing that there for people who have are responsible that deal with veterinarians all the time and their pets are always seen there, that they be given some kind of grace period as long as the dog is confined to an area where they cannot produce um puppies or uh that because it does drastically affect the dog's growth potential and bone development if you alter them too young.
I I would like to speak speak to that if I can.
Okay.
All right, great.
So in the ordinance, it actually allows for a veterinarian to write us a note that says exactly what something to the effect of what you're saying and we will honor that license fee at the altered rate. Now, that is one way to kind of address that concern of yours. Another um way is by making the unaltered license um affordable, more affordable. So from a hundred and fifty, we're asking for thirty dollars for the first year. You purchase a one-year license at the thirty-dollar rate and generally in um dogs, the first vaccine is only good for one year. So we'd like you to align your first year at that thirty-dollar rate and then at this on on your second year, if you're able to get that animal spayed or neutered safely, you can then purchase that three-year altered license, which um is better than the way it's set up right now where we're asking you to buy a hundred and fifty dollar license for the first year and then we'll 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 lower the fee to an altered animal when you can. But again, in our current municipal code, it allows for um animal services to honor the altered price for any kind of medical reason. Typically, this is like uh seen with older dogs, um but we just had a scenario where what you described um was relayed to us from the veterinarian and we honored that altered fee. And so I I want to say that you you have a good point, but we're we're working on strategies strategies to address that right now.
Okay, a lot of why I wanted to bring that up is that a lot of people are unaware uh because year years ago, it used to be spay and neuter as soon as possible, but the veterinarian uh um society has determined that it's a more of a detrimental to certain breeds of dogs to spay neuter them too young and so they hold off.
Yes, there I I'm very aware of that research, so we try to honor that. The trend is going, people are still encouraging spay and neuter, but a lot of vets are saying that holding off till they fully mature um to 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 a later date is better for the animal in the long run and we want to kind of recognize that science.
All right, Stacy, any other public comment?
Yes, we do. Let me, Robert Van Cleef, you will have uh three minutes as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a related comment. I was in the new uh licensing's uh website today, uh having been used to the old one that actually had information in it. The new one is uh basically unfinished. Both of my cats have two different uh entries in there. One is expired and the other one's paid for. There's no indication of the uh expiration dates for the uh that that is tied to the license or anything like like that as being suggested here. But for my dog who that passed away and we took him off the thing, all it says is expired and his her name's not on there. So there's nothing to indicate which animal that one's applied to. So I suggest someone do a pass through the uh new online website uh to look at the licensing structures and make it more informative. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Robert.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback, Robert.
That's all the public comment that we have, Mayor Gateway.
All right, thank you. All right, council.
Yeah, Garrett, I have I have a comment.
All right, Linda, go for it, you're up.
Okay, so um first of all, for Craig and and for us, I really appreciate um I really appreciate this. Uh to begin with, um number one, we didn't, I didn't license Little Jake uh until after he was neutered for exactly this reason because there was no way I was gonna pay a hundred and fifty dollars when I, you know, obviously intended to um um to get him a license, but so we had to wait until uh four, five, or six months, whatever it was, when the when they did that. And um and I could have licensed him earlier, but but I certainly wasn't gonna do that. I love the idea that you're going to tie it to the length of his vaccination because he's just gotten his three-year vaccination and I've just renewed his one-year permit and it only it's only logical that we would make the license coincident with the term of the of the vaccination because the two are dependent on each other. So I really appreciate that. And um three years ago or so, when when Senior Jake's um license actually fell apart from metal fatigue, um I didn't want to have to pay five dollars to get him a new tag. I thought that was a little uh punitive when it wasn't something I did, it was the tag that just fell apart. So I'm not sure we should be charging, and I brought this up with Carrie at the time, I'm not sure we should be charging for five dollars for a replacement tag. And I know that you'll have um in your new fee schedule, I know you'll have um um uh some reduced fees or something for senior citizens the way you do now, which is also very nice and really helps. And otherwise, I and I think that's uh I think that's what I wanted to comment on. So number one, making the term of the license coincident with the term of the vaccination. Number two, I completely agree with reducing the cost of to an unaltered pet. And number three, let's please don't charge for replacement tags when the old one just flat out falls apart. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. So my question is to you, Craig, just really quick, and this is more just strategy behind trying to get uh vicious animals registered. Do you find that if we had a lower fee, you'd be more people would register, so you'd be able to keep track of them? The vicious animal, because I know like, you know how it is, if you put it high, then someone with a vicious animal might decide, you know, I'm not gonna pay that fee, so I'm just gonna keep my, or is it more important that you find them or is it more important that we have the revenue to recover when one of those gets loose? What do you feel?
I feel like the idea of having it, the fee be low, doesn't directly correlate with people coming into compliance. It's kind of the same effect or it's a similar idea to raising the um the the unaltered license fee so high that the expected result is everybody goes out and spay or neuters their animal. That's not what we found happens in that case and with the low fee of the potentially dangerous animal, we don't find people coming forward and saying, hey, my dog did this. We we find these animals through um direct reports of the victims of these incidents and bite reports from people who go to the hospitals and then it's on our officers to track down and locate these animals and then do a thorough investigation and then apply that designation when it's appropriate. But no, what we're seeing is is not people coming forward and saying, my dog did this because of the fee is affordable. We're seeing people uh keep a dog that they may or may not be a hundred percent invested in um when it's done something pretty serious um because it's very easy. There there's no really thought that has to go into it. They just pay the money and retain the dog and they keep going and hopefully, nothing happens.
Okay, all right, thank you. Donald, Siri, guys have any opinions?
Um, I don't disagree with anything that I heard Linda say, so I'll start off with that. Yeah, I don't think that if we charge you five dollars when something that we issued to a dog owner um deteriorates to the point where they need another one. So I would totally agree with that. Uh I'd like to see, yeah, uh special consideration for disabled owners, elderly owners, uh low-income owners. The point of the point of any of this stuff is to get compliance. I think I think Garrett, you asked, you know, i- if the fee would, you know, i- is fee recovery, we never recover our our costs for administering something like this. I'm I'm sure when David Speachill has talked about the fact that in a lot of instances, there's a lot of question as to the efficacy of animal control licensing to get um uh for for the for the public safety of the costs of doing these, but a lot of these are mandated by the state. So I would agree that that on uh I'm especially like in the first year of an animal's life, and I guess we're only talking really dogs here, but I mean, this is cats too and other things, but uh it's rare to have, I guess, a vicious cat. But the the point of this is in the first year of of a dog's life is to get them vaccinated and hopefully to have them not breed um and and to get them uh, you know, altered when they can. I've never had a large dog, so I I I didn't know that you shouldn't get them vaccinated when they're, you know, when you first adopt them. So I've always done that, I either through the adoption service or at my vet. So if there was a way that, yeah, in that first year of the dog's life to adjust it and I I think you kind of got an idea there. My my only concern here is when you, we we've got a hundred dollar fee now for the vicious dangerous animal um fee and to just triple it and say, well, but it's gonna cover for three years. I don't know if there, you know, there should be a graduated scale to this in some way. I mean, the point of these is is again, it's not cost recovery, it's not to get to get these dog owners to be in compliance because these are frankly, um usually owners that are not invested in taking care of their animals, that's why they're getting out of their backyard, that's why they end up attacking people because they're also not taking the time to train the dog um in a lot of instances and to take care of it, frankly. And there are exceptions to that, but I would in painting with a broad brush, I would put more of this blame on owners than I do on dogs. And so the point of this is to be a little punitive and to also make sure that we're tracking this owner and the fact that they're not caring for their animal in the way that they should. And it's turned into, you know, a bad situation. So I'm fine with it, but again, I've to go from a hundred to three hundred, to me, that seems excessive to a certain extent, so uh you know, maybe it's two hundred next year and then three hundred the year after that, um as far as a graduated scale in implementing these things. I I'm I'm also really interested in understanding how and and what the 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 fine or um trying to think of another word. What is what is the um the enforcement mechanism for, let's say, somebody moving from Sacramento to here that has an animal that was considered vicious or or dangerous in Sacramento um to come here and they don't report that or I I I'm, you know, we 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 can't get the or the state can't get a decent system of, you know, a deadbeat dad that's not paying child support from one county to the next. How are we going to do this for dangerous dogs? So that that to me seems, you know, like I I would want to understand more about how we're trying to do that and enforce it and what kind of um what kind of penalty for not reporting would that necessarily be and I'm not sure if I heard that or not. But that that to me seems like the most interesting one that if if somebody moved into the city that was previously that their dog was previous to that, one, did they pay five hundred dollars in, I I don't know, in Elk Grove already, then they moved here? Are we charging them another three hundred and they paid a a fee for this? I mean, you could end up with a scenario like this. You know, I live in Elk Grove, my dog attacks another dog, so they put them on the list, I paid four hundred dollars and but I get kicked out of my apartment because it happened in my apartment complex. So then I moved to Rancho Cordova. What kind of incentive do I have to come to animal control and say, hey, I've got this dog with me and I got kicked out of my apartment and this is why and I paid this fine, but I'm moving because I can't stay there? So I then again, that that's a problem, not a solution. I have no idea how you had you address that, but I would imagine the 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 dog owner has a pretty good incentive not to tell us that they've moved here or that their dog has this or had this problem. So I'd be interested to hear more about that.
Um, I'd like to just briefly address that or give you a
Okay, sure, please.
So it's first, great, great insight, um and that happens um regularly where animals do move. And so what we rely on a lot is other jurisdictions to let us know that an animal is moving to our um city. And so in my my time here as a senior animal service officer, I've been here almost a year. We've had three animals designated in other jurisdictions come into the city and one was reported to me by um the agency that declared the dog vicious and two people self-reported. They called me and said, what does it take to have my animal living in Rancho Cordova? So that's that that's kind of a a good example of how it can work, but you're absolutely right. If somebody from another jurisdiction comes in here and we don't, we're not notified, there's nothing upfront that we can do to to, you know, find that out. What we think is important is that if that animal does something aggressive in the city and we look at the history of that animal and we find out, oh, yeah, it was designated in another area, then we have a mechanism to say, well, you were designated in um Elk Grove, so under our municipal code, your dog meets the criteria here. And then we could actually have some kind of way to enforce our And then we could actually have some kind of way to enforce our permit conditions on the animal. Um, if if they come here, like the the good examples that I gave, if they come here and they said, our dog was designated in Elk Grove, what we're suggesting, staff suggesting, is that the the requirements that were put on that animal from Elk Grove, they just simply follow that animal from the length uh from that original designation. We don't want to hold more hearings or re-investigate the situation. We simply want to say that the animal was designated in Elk Grove and based on our municipal code, that animal meets the criteria. And you have to abide by the conditions that were imposed by Elk Grove if you want to maintain that dog here.
Okay, I have one other question, um, and this this may be more of a an economic development question or permitting question or a business licensing question. Um, I know Elk Grove has run into, or I I've I've heard reports from vets in Elk Grove that they're getting that they're getting letters directly from the city saying, send me all of the animals that you vaccinated so that we can send letters out to tell those owners that they need to register. Um, because those businesses have to get a business license to do business within the city of Rancho Cordova, can we require veterinarians to turn over vaccinations and addresses of owners?
Yes, that the the short answer is yes, we can.
And are we doing that?
We are beginning to.
Okay.
We are, we are, we're collecting vaccine stats from the SPCA who we partner with.
Mm-hmm.
So every month, um, they sent us a report that includes the animal's information and the dog owner's information. And I'm working with um public relations on building a friendly, informative email that just notifies the owner that a license is required and and in a in a way that is, it's not punitive feeling, it's just informational, that, hey, congratulations on your animal, you know, the next step is obtaining a license, here's the process. And we're not opening cases on these people at all, we don't want to see it used the wrong way. But that information is important for us to collect because the state ex, the state health board expects us to turn over an accurate description of how many animals are vaccinated in Rancho Cordova. So those numbers are important. And prior to my uh time here, we were not collecting those, but we're in the process of reaching out to vets and trying to get them to do that with us, um, so we can work together as a team.
Thank you.
All right, David?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is a a program, obviously, that has public health impacts as well as uh it's important, you know, for for pet owners who want to be following all the rules. And the challenge I've always had with it are probably the statistics that came out early. And uh I think the report here was uh two percent registration rate for cats and eight percent registration rate for dogs. Um, those numbers are kind of impossibly low, I mean, that's sort of like at a at a failure level. I sort of wonder what's the point of of trying to do the registrations? If you're only two percent successful at something, are you actually accomplishing anything? Or is, would we be better off just uh just throwing it aside? So is there is there a clear state mandate uh that we need to be registering cats and dogs?
From the California Health and Safety Code, it's it's um one, two, one, six, nine, zero. That mandates that we uh have a licensing program and license animals. So we, and you're absolutely correct, we are failing to do a good job at that right now. Um, and so we're trying to identify why we're having this shortcoming and and make these changes. Because it's important, um, like you said, it affects pet owners, it affects the pet population. So we want to really make some changes going forward.
Yeah, so my two cats may be like a statistically relevant number of cats in our whole industry. That's kind of interesting. Um, so I've had this problem uh in the past of trying to register and re-register uh the cats. So the example would be you uh have your annual vet checkup in July, let's say, and that's when you get the vaccine. So the following June, I get a notice saying, if you don't have, you know, the certificates thus by July, this will be a late registration, you'll have to pay a late fee. And if you go to the vet in July, before the date of the anniversary of the shot, uh, many vets will not give the shot. They want to wait until month thirteen or something like that before giving the shot. And there's a long history of vaccinations and pets and and worried owners. And so their their best practices, frankly, over the past years is years have shifted. For example, it used to be a multi-year vaccine for rabies that they're no longer giving. So um that was like, it's an annual complication, right? So every month, every year is sort of like a month later when you're getting vaccinated. And therefore, every year, under our old system anyway, you would be penalized uh for a late for a late registration. And if we're at two percent, kind of the last thing we want to do is throw out hefty penalties out there to try to get it down to one percent, right? So that that clearly calls for reform of the system. Have you have you fixed that particular nuance?
We, staff would like to see um the late period expand expanded, because in the municipal code, it says one day. Um, the way our admin staff has been treating this, uh uh according to their insight, is that they've now given seven days. Staff is recommending thirty days. We want to see a thirty day grace period from the uh expiration of the vaccine to allow the owner to go time to go out and get the next vaccine and purchase a license that lines up with the expiration date.
Yeah.
We're also suggesting a a kind of a terminology shift from a one-year license, a two-year license and a three-year license. We'd like the terminology to say you can purchase up to a one-year license. If your vaccine is good for three to twelve months, you can purchase up to a one-year license. If it's good for twelve to twenty-four months, you can purchase up to a twenty-four. Because I think people are miss miss, they, you don't, as a consumer, you're buying a one-year license that expires in seven months. That's hard for somebody to understand. Um, and then the fix of this is with that terminology and with being less punitive, they come into compliance initially. On their renewal date, they will line up. Um, they'll go out, get the shot, renew their license, and the expiration of each of those will expire together. And that happens after one time of getting into compliance, we'll be renewed together going forward after that. That's the closest suggestion that we'd make.
Yeah, I think there's definitely got to be a, you know, a grace period in there sometime, thirty days, sixty days, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
You know, people could have things happen in their lives and vacations, uh difficulty scheduling and appointment for the vet, uh forgetting that it's due on a certain date. I mean, all kinds of things can drive a delay of that. And from the biology side of it, it's not as if that vaccine fails after a year. You know, you sort of get, you get your peak immune response, and then over time, it kind of wanes. Frankly, at a couple of years, a one-year shot is probably still uh decent in terms of protection for for a lot of things we're getting vaccines for. So um I guess I'd like to see some some leeway in that. Uh, just with the eye towards keeping people in the system as opposed to driving them out. And then with regard to the vet, uh, or vets reporting, you know, animals, that seems to me to be a a challenging scenario. You know, if you live in Rancho Cordova, odds of going to a Rancho Cordova vet are probably substantial. But there's probably a lot of people who have pets at vets outside of this region, so, I mean, outside of the city. So I don't know, you know, if we undertake an effort to get vets from all over the county or a multi-county area to report back to us about animal vaccines they've given, that seems like it might be tough for them to do, uh, or tough to uh for us to even keep up with. It would seem to be an awfully hit and miss process. Do you have any any thoughts about that or what other agencies do?
I thi- I think you're you're right in that there are probably quite a few uh uh animal owners that go outside of our city for vet care. Um, but with that, right now, in not collecting the information, we we are not able to paint any kind of accurate picture at all. So the small amount, I don't want to say small, but the amount of people going outside of the city comparatively to the people who use services inside the city, um, is going to be way different. So we're hoping to capture the information inside of the city and at the the shock clinics um that come in frequently and at the SPCA. And staff feels like that will give us a much greater clearer picture. That's not going to be perfect, and that's admitted, because like you said, there's other factors of where people are getting treatments. Um, but if we can get all the vets, I think there's currently eight or nine vets inside of Rancho Cordova and the SPCA, and then the shock clinics, I think we'll we'll have a great idea of the amount of vaccinated animals in the city. Now, that'll in turn allow us to look at our licensing numbers and see whether or not we're making improvements in the right direction.
Yeah, so Garrett, um, just a follow-up comment.
All right, Linda.
To David's point, um, um Craig, I know you can only do what you can only do, but um if you if you check out next door, anytime somebody says, I need a veterinarian, then um seriously, only fifty percent of the recommendations are ever here in Rancho. Um, there's a, there's somebody in Gold River that people think highly of, and there's somebody up on, um, I think it's up on Madison, that um people recommend frequently. And um, I mean, you have no idea where people go who ask for recommendation, but only fifty percent of the recommendations are here in Rancho Cordova. And um, to David's other point, when I called to get um, to get Jake's um vaccination, I was aware that um urban legend has it that some vets will not vaccinate before um the the vaccinations are ready to expire. And Jake's vaccination was going to expire like the twenty-sixth or twenty-eighth of February. Well, it just so happened that our vet is so popular and because of the way in which, um, you know, we've all experienced, you have to, um, obviously, the vets are like restaurants. They um they have, they will come out and get your, get your pet, they take it inside. You know, they can, they, their uh ability to move and uh appointments through their sys, through their system on any day is really compromised. So I couldn't get an appointment until the nineteenth, I I had called a whole month before, and I couldn't get him in until the nineteenth of um February. So um, so that made it much closer to the to the vaccination expiration date. But that's definitely something that we need to be able to work with uh right now.
Um, a great point, and um what we've done to try to help people out through this time is we've stopped applying late penalties for licensing during um the pandemic. So
Right.
We we understand that people are having a very difficult time getting to the vets. The vet may or may not be treating unless it's an emergency situations. Our shock clinics went away, people were months out from their appointment. So we suspended all late penalties during this time.
Right.
Again, we we just don't want it to be punitive, um, and staff feels like a late penalty right now, it doesn't make sense for all the reasons you just explained.
Great, thank you, Craig.
All right. Um, so Craig, did you get all the information you're going to need?
Yes, I got a great start, and I really do appreciate all the feedback.
All right, excellent. All right, moving on, uh, Stacy, can you go ahead and read the subject?
The subject is a resolution of intention to renew the Rancho Cordova Tourism Business Improvement District.
Can we get Amanda's cats to go ahead and give the staff reports?
Um, how about if I move approval?
And I guess we're done early today. Roll call, no, I'm just joking, Amanda?
Well, I I I'll I'll throw another loop at you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'll start on this one for for Amanda for tonight, so, um.
What? Where's the cat? We just got over talking about the bay neutering and licensing. Lost the cat.
So I did, I did hear, I did hear uh Councilmember Budge offer to, you know, to move the item, but I don't know if you'd still want a presentation from uh Mr. Sipodnik in the group.
You sure do.
Okay.
Spend a lot of time on that presentation, hit it.
But I, but I, but I, I would reiterate what Linda just said, that I think a lot of us are very supportive of it. And
Absolutely.
But, you know, make us even more excited to support it.
Yeah, actually, it's hard to believe it's been five years already, Mark.
I know.
Time flies.
So.
So so really, the the part was just for me to introduce you to Mark, who you all know, and uh to let him present the renewal uh effort that they're underway for the Tourism and Business Improvement District.
I still move approval.
Perfect. All right, well, it's a pleasure, uh, thank you, I appreciate being here, Mayor Gatewood, uh Vice Mayor Terry and uh council members, really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you a little bit about our renewal, give you uh kind of an overview of the process, a little bit of why it's important for our organization for the city going forward. Um, one thing, let's see here, I just want to make sure I do have control, I believe. Um, let me make sure I have control over this document. All right, it says I can control it, but let's see here. All right, there we go. So I have been clicking through, I'm getting that. Let's go, uh, we'll get this part loaded up here. All right, here we go. Um, so again, yeah, I have Kelly Rankin with me uh tonight. She works with Civitas, the organization uh that has been instrumental in helping us with this renewal process. They helped us initially ten years ago when this uh came to city council. Some of you ca, uh, city council members were around at that time for the first renewal. Uh, but I know that we do have some new city council members, so um this, some of the information I present may be a repeat for those of you that recall from back in the days when we have done uh the establishment of this district and the renewal. But this will um be new information potentially for some of you that are newer to city council. So um at the end of it, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Okay. Yeah, that's, um, I'm trying to move this forward, it's uh, I'm not able to move this slide deck.
I'm just going to stop and restart your control.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you, let me see if I can grab this now. Yes, all right. Um, so one thing I wanted to mention upfront, before we get into these exciting slides, um, on the agenda, we did remove one item. Um, we had in here originally for district expansion, uh, that is uh being pulled from this presentation and from this effort here, so it's not under consideration at this time. But wanted to let you know that it was part of the original packet. So if you see a discrepancy between something you may have printed and what you're seeing here in front of you, just wanted to let you know on that. Um, so yeah, just to give you a little bit of history on the Rancho Cordova Travel and Tourism uh District, we were uh put into motion in twenty-ten, really established in two thousand and eleven and uh got ramped up at that point. We are governed by a Board of Directors that includes uh one city member, which uh Assistant City Manager Michael Renner is on our uh Board of Directors, he's the city representative there. We also have Diane Rogers from the Chamber of Commerce, and and both of those seats are permanent seats on our board. And then we have rotating seats on our board that are made up of hoteliers. So at this point, we have nine hoteliers that are part of our board as well, uh, making a total of eleven. Um, we established, as I said, in in two thousand and ten, uh, good time to establish because uh it was a good time to um to create uh some demand for tourism. And we did see over the course of those years, after this was established, that we did increase tourism almost to double. And this means that P O T was doubled, this means economic impact was doubled, uh, really had some great impact over the the course of the uh organization's history. Um, the way that we were funded in the beginning was a dollar fifty per room per night. Uh, and that fee is an assessment, it's a self-assessment, so it's the hotels verifying that they are okay with us coming and assessing the hotels, which they pass on to the guests, this dollar fifty per room per night assessment fee. Uh, and then that is what funds our organization. So it's a hundred percent paid by the visitor into the region. Uh, and I think that's one important thing for people to know. Sometimes uh people outside of our industry don't realize exactly how that all works. But uh just so you know, yeah, we are funded, it's a special assessment that the, uh, it's a self-assessment that the hotels have levied upon themselves to create this. We're uh extending it now to what will amount to a four point five percent assessment on these room night stays. Uh, definitely will increase our budget. A portion of that is is really tied to a long-term percentage of around three percent. Um, the other one point five percent is in the, really qualifies at this point as a temporary recovery district. We just went through the most difficult year in, uh, my lifetime. And for many of us, it would be any of our lifetimes for the tourism industry. And, uh, coming out of this, we're going to need a little extra horsepower to kind of power our city back into place where we belong. We've done pretty well. None of our hotels, our hotels closed during this timeframe during the pandemic, but there's a lot of opportunity ahead. Uh, and as, uh, Councilmember Sander mentioned earlier, you know, it's vaccines rolling out. Uh, we see the traveler sentiment is changing and there definitely is going to be some opportunity, we think even by this summer, to really, um, increase the occupancy rates at our hotels. So, um, with that, you know, we have like a one and a half percent temporary recovery district that's part of this plan as well. So, um, you know, I did want to mention that quickly that we did, uh, this will talk about kind of how, how it all works. But what we've done over the past ten years, you know, really has allowed us to support up to seventy events per year. Um, and do things within the community too, like providing, uh, paying for, uh, artistic bike racks or paying for, uh, things, improvements to Hagan Dog Park. We were just talking about dogs, but if they want to socialize, Hagan Dog Park's really the best place to go in the region. And we were able to, you know, contribute to things like that. So there's a lot of community benefit that comes from what we're doing. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. Community benefit is one of the, um, sections that we'll be addressing here in the agenda. But the business improvement districts are, they're, um, fairly common in California. Uh, the head of Civitas, John Lambeth, he's the one who actually created this legislation and drafted it, um, back in the day. And, um, really has helped us to create a mechanism by which the hotels can really help themselves. But it also helps obviously, uh, the local community in a big way too. So we'll talk a little bit about, you know, what that does. But the hotels are paying the assessment, it's collected by the city. The city collects a two percent fee, uh, fee for doing that to cover the administrative costs. And we appreciate that the city, um, takes that responsibility. And then the, the ultimate, uh, program is managed by us, the DMO, Destination Management Organization, and that's Rancho Cordova Travel and Tourism. So, uh, it's a level playing field, everybody, all watching properties pay in. We have seventeen hotels, soon to be eighteen. It was nice to see the development. I saw a couple of days ago that's happening, um, with the new Town Play Suites, um, over off of Point East. Um, so very exciting that that's coming up too. And, um, this provides a very stable funding platform for us in general. Obviously, twenty-twenty is a little bit of a curve ball, um, but we can weather that and we did. And, uh, you know, let's, let's hope we don't see that, uh, type of year again. But with this new renewal, we're going to be in a really good position to, uh, promote Rancho Cordova and everything that we have to offer here. So the roadmap for renewal, um, we had, you know, a T-Bid Steering Committee established. Uh, we did a lot of stakeholder outreach, you know, to our hoteliers and so forth. Um, we determined, you know, the parameters of service and we came up with a, a management district plan that guides how we spend the money and so forth and kind of, it's a, it's kind of our governing document. Um, and then the district plan was sent out with a petition on whether or not our hotels would be in favor of this. And we needed to get the majority of hotel rooms and the ownerships of those, that number of rooms, um, to agree to the, uh, new, uh, assessment, which we passed that threshold. So we're really on to the city council now, uh, for hearings and approval. And, uh, so we're getting close to the finish, really. We've done a lot of the groundwork and we're really close and excited to, uh, be bringing this to city council at this time. Um, just to give you, you know, that I mentioned that the, these tourism districts are popular in California in particular. Um, there are, you know, a hundred eighty-one T-Tourism Improvement Districts, but in California, I mean, we're, we're right around a hundred, uh, districts just in our own right, just here within California. So it's a very competitive landscape. But this has been, uh, the world really pays attention to what this mechanism is for collecting and, uh, creating revenue that we can utilize then to build business and economic, uh, impact into our communities. So it's, um, really been a benefit, uh, for sure. And we'll talk a little bit more about kind of what that means for our specific community here. Um, for us in 2019, which was really our last year that we can judge from. Uh, 2020 was a little bit different year. If you did watch the Business Outlook, uh, program, you saw that, you know, P O T revenues were down, you know, in the neighborhood of fifty percent. It was a pretty drastic drop. Uh, we'd never seen anything like that happen, um, but, you know, certainly hit us. But prior to that, we were looking pretty good. Um, we were driving in the neighborhood of two-hundred million dollars in economic impact. This is again from 2019. Um, and the, the, most of that funding actually ends up going to restaurants and retailers and bars and, and other establishments, um, other attractions. Um, the hotels do get a, a good percentage of that, but the hotels actually, uh, don't retain as much revenue as restaurants do from visitors that are traveling through our area. So just one thing to keep in mind that, and referencing 2020, this was a really tough year for restaurants. Well, one thing that we did, we flipped our marketing around so that we could help promote restaurants as much as possible. Shop local and dine local was a big part of what we did during this past year. Um, so again, we, you know, we, our main job is to get out there and drive, uh, visitors from the outside to come in and spend money. Twenty-twenty obviously was a little bit different with the rules that were in place. But we think that even the governor's order for a hundred and twenty-mile radius for travel is going to be lifted fairly soon, um, with what's happening with the vaccinations. And we will be ready to go. We already have plans in place and we're, um, we're charged up and ready for the new world. We know it's going to be a different world than what we've lived in in the past, different travelers for sure. Uh, but we're really excited about what this is going to, going to be. Um, so yeah, and in addition, you know, just talking about the thing that we'll be able to bring events back. I'm really excited that we'll have, I, I think the Court of McEwen Council, um, has done a phenomenal job, you know, with the types of events they've done over this past year. But we're going to be able to bring some live events back, some big spectator sporting events back. Um, you know, when you look at like NCAA rowing championships, when you look at, um, you know, we had Amgen Tour of California, but other major events we'll be able to bring back into the community. And so we're really looking forward to that opportunity as well. And, um, just, you know, want to touch a little bit more in terms of the economic impact too. One big portion of it is that it's, you know, it supports jobs. So, you know, the money, the econ- uh, economic impact that we bring to the region supports a number of jobs. It's over a thousand jobs in 2019 that we were supporting directly through the hotels. Um, obviously they took a pretty big hit, but we are confident that we will get them back to having at least as many employees as they had before, if not more over time here. Um, and especially with the new property opening up, um, with, hopefully within the next year. Um, I think that there is plenty of good optimism here for the future, that we're going to be able to bring back those jobs and all of the restaurant jobs too that were impacted by this. Hopefully we can help to offset some of that with visitor travel. Uh, obviously people need to eat and we're happy to promote our barrel district and our restaurants, uh, all the time. And so this gives us that great mechanism to be able to do that. Um, you know, we drive traffic to museums, which they haven't been open, but they will be. And we're really excited as these businesses get back to, uh, back into business that we'll be there to help support and promote those businesses. Um, in 2021, um, so we're really looking for, you know, to be more competitive, uh, in 2021 and this renewal is, is part of that plan. We really have, uh, big plans in terms of what we can do, deliver for this community. Um, in many ways, we're looking at a variety of possibilities. But we look at all types of projects and opportunities, not only just, not only marketing, uh, which we know we can do. We know we can deliver, you know, over fifty million digital views or digital impressions on an annual basis. We can help the reputation of the city in that way, uh, and drive business to our community. But we can do so much more. And I think one of the great things with the, the new renewal will put us in a position to do things that we haven't done in the past, in a way we haven't done in the past, and kind of meet the needs of this new world. We're, um, we know that COVID has changed things a little bit. The travelers to our region will change. They have changed during the pandemic, but it will change after the pandemic. The business traveler that was really kind of the, uh, the meat and potatoes of our, um, room stays here is going back. Business is not coming back as quickly as leisure travel will. So we're reconfiguring and making sure that we're good to go to make sure we draw leisure travelers and other types of travelers into our market as quickly as possible and to retain, uh, retain business as much as we can that we've had in the past and then build on that. So all of these future revenue drivers are on the table and we're really, uh, like I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of optimism. Uh, we're starting to see through destination analysts and tourism economics, um, some real good, um, traveler sentiment that people are finally feeling like that they may be able to travel here shortly. If they're more confident in their upcoming plans. And so people are starting to make arrangements, do a little bit of travel here and there. Um, our partnership with Gold Country Visitor Association, Visit California and others, will be able to ride their tails and, um, you know, again, deliver some visitors to our region. Uh, so that's kind of the quick overview. Again, I have Kelly Rankin here. If you do have any questions, she's an expert on T-Bids and, uh, can certainly, uh, answer any technical questions that you have. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you have about the district itself or, um, any questions you have pertaining to the renewal. All right, great. Thank you, Mark. Uh, any public comments, Stacy?
We do not have any public comment in Zoom or by phone for this particular item that I see.
I'll second the motion.
All right, can I get a roll?
So just to be clear.
I don't know if any others had comments.
Just to be clear, I want to make sure that we have Councilmember Budge as the motion and Councilmember or Vice Mayor Donald Terry is the second. Is that correct?
That's how I had it.
Yeah, well, that's correct.
Thank you. So for roll call.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Hi.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood?
Hi, and Mark, we are super excited and thank you for all the hard work you do to keep our city going. And you're a critical piece of this company and, uh, the city. And we are just tickle pink about all the new growth and all the great things you guys are about to do.
Yeah, well, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. All right, do we have any future agenda items? No, seeing none, I would like to adjourn, uh, Linda, who are those people again?
Marlin Guinea.
Marlin Guinea?
Yeah.
Marlin Guinea and also a happy, big happy birthday to our favorite little guy, um, in the Terry family.
I, I do have a, uh, future agenda item.
Oh, okay.
Um, I was passed a resolution by A-PAPA, which is the Asian Pacific Islander Organization. They have a lot of concerns about violence against, uh, people of Asian descent in the United States and a, and a resolution which I support. Um, I forwarded on to the city clerk and I'm hoping that a majority of you would join me in, uh, adding that to a future agenda item as a resolution.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Um, I was a little confused to get an email today thanking me for passing it, but.
Yeah, it was like, thank you.
It was a little, little ahead of where we were.
True.
I support, uh, adding that to a future agenda.
All right, very good.
Okay. So once again, uh, and then thank you to, and then happy birthday to Keaton, uh, Terry for his great birthday. Ten years old, so that means Donald's officially older than me.
Old.
No, still aging, sorry.
And my son Charles is going to be sixteen in a week.
Wow.
Ooh, yeah, it goes so quick.
Does he get the family Porsche or the Benz?
That's up for debate and there's a lot of negotiation on insurance rates that has to be done.
That's for sure.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you everyone. Have a good night.